Dear Heavenly Father, thank you for letting us gather here today and please let us do the business the way you see fit. Let us keep you in mind and let your light shine through us in all of our actions in your name we pray. Amen. All right, I'm gonna go over real quick some stuff that's on the agenda for tonight. Um, we have renewal of leased property, that is the Davis Faith Company Building. Um, we've come up with the missed payments, what's um due to us, added that on as well as the uh regular five hundred a month payment and um it's got to be presented to him as soon as I can get in touch with him, we'll present it. Um, that's, that's on there and you'll see the agenda item correlating with it. We will discuss, Nate will discuss the new fire engine purchase in a minute. We have the Alabama Workforce Ready Transport Agreement between Safe and City, um that's item twelve. And then lighting replacement repairs for street shop and animal shelter. Discussion of insurance reimbursement for shop tools, that's an add item on tonight's agenda. Um, it turns out that their cost of eleven thousand, it's a change, is gonna be a hundred percent reimbursable. So we're setting a limit not to exceed fifteen because I think that quote was quite old, about a year old of the eleven thousand. So give a little wiggle room there. Um, there's an additional funding for the city shop for electrical wiring for those shop peers that went to change them. And I think more damage was there or old stuff was up, just like what, two, three hundred dollars?
Three hundred and fifty dollars, sir.
Three hundred and fifty dollars extra for the wiring that was not included, so I, I don't think that's an issue. Um, and that's discussion only. Then we've got drainage improvement change order on the project over on East Clay Street. A approval of the Alabama Workforce Ready Transport, that's the forty thousand dollar agreement, um contract, new contract that Winn has looked over okay and is, we worked it out with the, the kings that were there to begin with. Then there is a renewal on that lease I just talked about. Lighting replacements, we talked about. Municipal court, court, cost reimbursements. And the training is back on here due to this taking place next fiscal year. So we haven't passed the budget yet, so therefore we need to approve this formally tonight. Um, okay. So Nate, I'll go ahead and get yours going. Tell us what you got here.
All right, so. Uh, y'all know I've been preparing y'all for, for, for what this is gonna look like. We have spent hours as a seven man truck committee poring over and designing a truck that's going to meet every need that our department needs to serve our community. Now, keep in mind historically that the fire truck industry has increased prices three to five percent a year. Over the last three years, the industry as a whole has increased prices five percent a quarter. So that is the current state of the fire truck industry and market. There is another price increase from Sutton coming on June fifteenth. So what I'm asking for is permission to sign this purchase agreement that you have in this package before the June fifteenth date. Now, the purchase agreement is different from the actual contract, which we will not sign until construction actually begins on the truck in another twelve, fourteen, eighteen months, who knows at this point in the market when they get to that point. So there will be additional pre-construction meetings that happen when we get to that point and all of that. Um, so the purchase agreement, while it is a written agreement, doesn't, in the big scheme of things, really hold a ton of weight because if we were to back out between now and when we sign the actual contract, they basically tear it up, throw it in the trash can and somebody else gets our spot in line. So by signing this purchase agreement before June fifteenth, it, it.
Gets us a spot in line.
Gets us a spot in line and it locks in the price before the June fifteenth price increase.
All right, I had a question. Our next council meeting is not till June the twenty, June the twenty, twenty something, twenty second? And Nate, we ain't read over any of this.
You're right, because we've, I, I literally got the last revision that you're holding in your hand this morning.
I understand.
We've been working to the eleventh hour on it. Um, I mean, there's a lot of.
How much or how mu- what's the percentage that you said they was going up?
Five percent.
Okay.
Plus, I mean, I, I don't know if you will, but I wouldn't know what to tell them to take off or tell people.
No.
I mean, the, the bottom line is like, like almost anything that you buy, you know, and I'm, I'm, I'm heading off the question before it gets here. Right? I mean, there are things that we could remove to save money, but if we cut price, we're also gonna cut product. And, and with the expectation that this truck is going to have a thirty year lifespan for our department. If we cut product and cut capability off of this truck, then we're gonna suffer because of it for the next three decades.
Well, and we also put out there, I mean, you had mentioned it and, and I kinda mentioned it as well, like, hey, go ahead. You know, think of a million dollar fire truck coming, million dollar, million dollar, and I mean, it's not a million dollars. I mean, just say that, it's close. So I, um, and, and also if we vote this in tonight, like you said, we're not, we're not out any money.
Yeah.
We could look this over and say, no, never mind, tear it up and we, all we do is just leave our spot in line.
So this is, this is just securing our spot in line and locking in the price before any further.
I got you, and if we change our mind, we don't wanna do this, then.
That, that, that option is on the table, although it defeats the whole purpose of moving forward with the.
Well, we're, we're, I'm, I'm just looking at the world, it has a crash and we don't have the money even though you raised taxes.
But remember, um, remember we talked about this too because if you look at the amount of months, the delivery date.
Yep.
We're not gonna get this until like.
Three years. Now, now that, what, what is, right now, what's realistic is thirty six to thirty eight months. That's, and, and of course, they're gonna, they're gonna, yeah, you know, under promise and over deliver. So, so the contract paperwork says forty to forty-five months, the rep is telling me right now they're putting trucks on the ground thirty-six to thirty-eight months. Of course, we hope that over the next thirty-six months, things get better and start moving a little quicker and maybe we'll get it even a little sooner. Now, a couple other things to add, number one, we do have the AFG grant out that we have applied for, for a total of seven hundred and forty-eight thousand dollars. So if we receive the grant, then obviously that drastically lessens what we're looking at on purchase price out of pocket. Um, and then I had also mentioned in one of our previous conversations that the, uh, you know, this does not include equipment on the truck, which is a drop in the bucket compared to the entire price of the truck. But I will purchase all the equipment to equip the truck out of any earmark funding from the, the tax increase that, that was passed to ensure that we can equip the truck without having to spend any more from general ledger or.
It's passed and it's gonna be there.
But, but I don't, I don't think, I don't think we should say that, does it? I don't think we should say earmark because I don't, I don't really know what the plan for that is because you still haven't, um, you still haven't given us that pay plan.
It, it, you'll see it come by your time. It'll, it's gonna be wrapped in with the.
I know, with the both.
But I mean, it's not like he'll spend the two fifty or whatever in one year on equipment. I think he's got, you would, in my mind, have three years just about to spend fifty, eighty, whatever.
Right.
To give bits and pieces here.
I know, but whatever the pay plan is, it's not going away. If it's approved, it's still gonna have to pay for that every year no matter what.
Yeah, that's correct. That's correct.
So.
And, and having.
We don't wanna plan for some, you know, you don't wanna, you don't know how much the money's gonna be, you don't wanna plan to spend it before you even have it. But what else I was gonna, um, add to Nate, even if we don't do this, um, I still have to buy a fire truck and it's still gonna take three years to get.
And we don't have to pay that price until it's here, literally, right?
There, there are some advantages to paying.
So you got money, you can save while you're waiting on it.
But that's, remember, that's what the, in the last meeting was talked about, was how to put some money back now. So what came about that? Cause the goal was to start planning to pay for the fire truck. Cause I mean, we're gonna have to put something down, like a down payment, if you're gonna order it eventually. But how, how are you gonna pay for this fire truck?
Did you spend it on the equipment?
I guess we'll have to talk about come budget down, right?
Well, probably before because if we sign this paper, then we're committed to buy a fire truck because we need a fire truck. And even if we don't get this fire truck, we still have to buy a fire truck. So how are you gonna still pay for it? Where the money's gonna come from and you need to be putting that money aside.
I feel like prices are gonna rise too, cause like, I mean, I feel like the cost of it will increase over time.
Yeah, that's what he was saying, but I'm saying you still need to, it's okay if we sign this paper today, but it still needs to be something set up to pay for this.
Whether it be.
Whether it's this fire truck or another fire truck. And it's still gonna take three years and then if you wait to next year, then you're, you're, you're not taking a year off, it's just three more years out.
Yeah, so we, we have, we just have to, we can sign this, remain in line, get our place in line and then look at, all right, what place are we gonna start ordering, uh, purchasing equipment out of? You know, what revenue stream and then what revenue stream are we gonna be putting back to save?
But, but now not budget time, it needs to be already in place so that we won't put a time time.
Cause we don't have to say a specific amount, it's just what revenue stream and where to get it out of.
We're right around the corner from the budget.
That we have to.
No, we, we, we don't owe, we don't have to pay anything till it shows up.
Okay, but you don't want it to show up and you don't have.
Right, not have, not have been.
If you don't have anything in place, you don't have a plan.
Well, once we're awarded, if there's no cancellation provision.
Yeah.
Oh, I'm sure there is with a, with a, with a penalty, but, but again, that will come when we actually sign a contract at pre-construction time, not. Not this, not here.
Um, I, I don't, I don't think that's a problem with signing this tonight at all and then we can further discuss about the different options and which revenue streams.
I just was trying to beat that next five percent price increase when I heard they were announcing that. You know, we've, we've been working on it, but we kicked it into, burned the midnight oil.
I, I know.
I got one more question and I know, I know you know, I don't even know if it's in here. How much is it gonna cost to fully equip this machine? I know you know.
S- seventy-five to a hundred, give or take. I mean, it, there's variance in there too, but.
Well, that was the last thing I was thinking, so.
I thought it was thirty-seven hundred.
Yeah.
No.
Okay, um, all right. That's good there. Um, I forgot, sorry, Mr. Bozeman, we got Jonathan Bozeman here, Alabama Power. Um, got in touch with him and there is some grant opportunities for security cameras, camera coverage in our downtown or wherever area. So I just want you to go ahead and kinda give us the pitch.
Yeah, so, um, my name's Jonathan Bozeman, I'm public safety manager with Alabama Power. I think I might have met a couple of y'all at, at the league municipalities, you know, I might have come through, I know Chief Johnson, um, has kinda seen our, what we do. Um, so with Alabama Power, I know we don't serve most of, um, the city, but we still have the opportunity, um, in the lighting group that I work in and doing work on utility poles, um, outside of our service area or inside of our service area. So we operate, um, camera systems, so surveillance cameras, video or license plate recognition cameras. And we do it on a service basis, just like we do with our streetlights. So if you think about streetlights that Alabama Power has, city pays a monthly fee, we maintain them. And then, you know, you just have the benefit of the light. We do the same thing when it comes to cameras. So instead of you guys having to worry about, you know, every time the camera goes down, we maintain the cameras, but we don't have access to the data. So the actual camera footage is owned by whichever customer we're working with. Um, depending on the type of system we go with, it, it's completely different. We customize it to each individual location and customer we're working with. Um, but like I said, license plate recognition, for instance, if you have cameras like that, um, one of the systems that we operate, um, is Block Safety. Um, Chief Johnson, I think you've seen that, that demonstration with that. So those are cameras that take pictures as cars go by.
So you're the reason people get tickets in the mail?
No, and that's actually, so, that's a couple of things that I wanna bring up with the license plate recognition. So with those cameras, it just takes a picture of a car as it goes by, uses artificial intelligence to say, hey, this is a red, you know, pickup truck, let's ship it. Puts it into a database, sees if, does it have a license plate, yes or no, if it does, takes those characters, puts those in a database. And it makes it searchable for, for the police department to be able to go back and say, all right, I need to see over the last twenty-four hours, you know, red pickup truck. And go boom, and get it within, normally fifteen to twenty seconds. So that's a good thing for, you know, reactive, going back, you know, something happened, let's go back and do investigations. Holds that data for thirty days. But proactively, it also, uh, for police departments, um, runs the NCIC, which is National Criminal Information Center database. That stolen vehicles, stolen tags, missing persons, felony warrants, not misdemeanor warrants, felony warrants. And if somebody with one of those runs by the camera, it proactively will send an alert to the police department via email, text, or through the, through the actual app itself. Um, and then they can go in and determine if it's still active because NCIC's only updated twice a day. Um, so it's not, you know, ongoing, but they get an alert, um, there's no personal information on, on those. Um, so it, when they see a tag on there, they still have to run it through LETS to determine who it's actually for. So the system doesn't have any personal identification, it doesn't know how fast you're going and it doesn't know if you're stopping or not. So it's not a ticketing system. Yeah, that, so that, that, that's not what this is and I have to explain that to a lot of, a lot of agencies because, you know, so many cities in, in Alabama now are doing the, the red light cameras or speed cameras. Montgomery, Phoenix City, Center Point, there, there's a lot of them around now that are doing it. That's not what this is. Um, and with the license plate recognition cameras, um, just having one camera then puts them on the network with the rest of all the law enforcement agencies. So right now, we have about eight hundred and fifteen cameras, um, of law enforcement agencies across the state. Block has an additional probably three hundred or so. So that there, there's close to a thousand cameras that if I have one, the police will be able to access. And then nationwide, there's about fifty thousand. So if there was, you know, let's say, uh, a homicide happened and you had a suspect vehicle, um, they would actually be able to search fifty thousand cameras to see is that, you know, did that vehicle come from another city? Come from another state and, and be able to search that kind of stuff. So it's kind of like a force multiplier on that part. On the video cameras, it's completely different, that's, you know, it's video, so it, it's recording everything that's going on. That's not capturing license plates, it's more for, you know, intersections, parks and recreation and things like that. So, um, like I said, there's no upfront costs, we put it on the monthly power bill. Um, we can attach to, um, your poles if you give us an attachment agreement, we can set poles for that. Um, the license plate cameras, we typically run on solar, so we don't even need a, um, a power connection, um, typically on that, so.
Now, what, um, I talked with Steve and then he was talking about the grant opportunities for this, is that strictly for like us to go after for implementation? Or, or what, what would that opportunity be?
Steve, the grants, you, you know about that part?
I'm not, I may have misspoken, I'm not sure about a grant opportunity for public safety. But those are things that we, we always are looking for grant opportunities for our cities.
Gotcha.
Whether it's public safety or water, sewer, things like that. So I'm not aware of a specific public safety grant that's available at this point.
We was talking in general.
In general, okay.
I know that we have had some of our municipalities that whenever they got money from all the COVID, um, grants up, I know we've put in quite a few cameras for that because public safety was part of that. So if you still have money left over from that, um, that's an option. We've got, I think we're at fifty-four municipalities now across the state that we, that we work with between counties and, and cities and towns. And, um, we also do work with housing authorities, we've got sixteen housing authorities across the state that we work with. And anybody that we put cameras up for, cause we've got homeowners associations, a couple small things like that as well. But anytime we put up a camera, um, one of our requirements is, is they've gotta give access to local law enforcement. Because like I said, I'm part of public safety, so we're doing this to try to make the community safer. Um, so if they're not willing to share with our, local law enforcement, we don't put the cameras up.
All right, the big question, the price.
How much it costs?
Yeah.
That, that's the one thing I don't know until we look at it for you, um, cause there's such, such a wide variety when it comes to video cameras. On the license plate recognition, I can tell you that, that camera, it, it kinda is what it is, it, it doesn't change. Um, it looks like this guy right here, that's the only version of it, no matter which road, we got this one version. Those run thirty-two fifty a year, three thousand two hundred and fifty dollars a year. We, like, so we put it on, on a monthly power bill, so that's twenty-seven, uh, two hundred and seventy dollars and eighty-three cents when you divide it out. That includes internet, so that's got a cell card built into it, that's got thirty days of storage, that's all the maintenance on it. And that covers one activated, it's on there. Um, when it comes to the video, I don't know, we have to really look at that to see what you want. Do you wanna fix the camera, pan tilt, zoom, multisensor, ten eighty P, four.
Would you be working with our police chief and our police captain to see where we need it, what we want?
Absolutely. Yeah, so we out, we go out and look at every location and we prefer to have, you know, not only have a meeting with the police department, but actually have somebody from the, um, department to come out with us while we're looking at the areas. Because we know what the cameras can do, so we might find a spot, hey, we don't have enough sun here, if we wanted to go solar. This roo- this park's too far off the road, but we want, might wanna move the camera to make the camera work better. They'll know better, hey, we can't miss this cut through, you know. I mean, I, I've come through Seligoga for years, but I don't know the city in and out like the police.
So what if we say, yeah, we want you to look into it, like, I guess a quote on riding around and seeing what we need and coming up with a price? Like what does that cost us?
Oh, not a thing.
So if you go do that, would it's police chief and then get us a price according to what y'all say and then we say, oh no, we're not gonna do it?
Didn't you?
You wanna start Monday?
Yeah, I'm, I'm open next week.
Uh, that sounds like a deal to me, I mean, I'm.
I'm, I'm good with it, whatever y'all think, just not gonna cost nothing to look.
Yeah, so I, I guess we'd have to formally, we'd have to formally prove that, approve that since there's no money at all. But, I mean, can we just give a, a go ahead, Yolanda, and then to see if it's wanting?
I think we need to just schedule it with you.
Mm-hmm. I'm just making sure we're doing everything formally, you know, so.
Just looking at your system values.
Yeah. Okay, so yeah, if y'all, you wanna get with Chief Johnson and y'all plan a day and go, go for it.
Yeah. Would the goal be to tr- to pick the highest traffic area to maximize the net fee and just have one camera or multiple cameras?
So, so that's gonna be completely up to you guys. So obviously, the more cameras you have, the better chance you've got of, of, um, blocking off areas. If you're looking at license plate cameras, a lot of times what we see a lot of cities do is try to create like a virtual fence. So the, the end parts coming into the city.
Yeah.
Uh, trying to create a virtual fence so that, you know, cause what we found a lot of times, the people that live in Seligoga aren't creating a lot of the crimes, it's people that are coming out, they're coming in. So if you get those alerts as they're coming in, that might give the police time to actually act.
I, I, I like it already. Kelly was just speaking about that a couple of days ago, he wanted to look into some cameras and whatnot, so.
Yeah.
Right time, get together.
We're with the housing authority right now and grant opportunities.
Oh, cool.
For them, but it'll benefit us.
Okay.
Yeah.
Sounds good to me. I appreciate that. Y'all get together and let us know how it goes.
Thank you, sir.
We'll do. Thanks, Steve.
Thank you.
Um, additional funding, we talked about the wiring, that's, anybody have any issues with that and the three hundred extra dollars?
Oh, we've got it.
Okay, the reimbursement is the same as with shop insurance, the shop, um, police furniture, same as that?
Yes, there it is.
Hundred percent reimbursable.
Hundred percent reimbursable.
And we're going up to fifteen since the quote's o- old at eleven thousand, so we're pushing not to exceed fifteen.
Yes, sir, you would have to provide receipts for everything so we can in fact send it to the insurance company.
Right, okay.
We skipped number three, sir.
The workforce ready transport agreement?
Yes.
So we're going to, between us, so we, we need to talk, that, that's gone over, that's the eighty-five thousand, correct?
No, sir, that's the forty thousand with Safe, that new program.
Yeah, okay, so that's, yeah, that's what I was mentioning that Winn had gone over. We had our meetings with Laura, um, goodness gracious, Margaret here. And, um, we got the verb is changed to where the liability wasn't all on us and stuff was shared. And I think Winn has agreed on that, the new contract?
Yes, sir, Winn's.
I have some, some concerns and some errors on the, uh, on the, the, uh, first, second, third, fourth, fifth page under general requirements. Uh, and consideration services provided by the, by the projects for Safe's funding at an amount not to exceed forty thousand. This is all reimbursable, or the city is spending forty thousand dollars? Because as you, because as you look through, the city in Safe, the city in Safe, the city in Safe, are we spending forty thousand dollars or is this a grant that we're getting?
It's supposed to be a grant we're giving.
Okay, so in, uh, in number five, under general requirements, the city in Safe should assume full financial reliability for audit exceptions. It means we're buying the, the requirement to have to pay for an audit. Uh, the, uh, we're agreeing to, uh, um, indemnify in Safe harmless D A R P D C and the Department of Transportation against any ill liabilities, losses, damages. That's not standard language and there's a cost with that, we need to figure out what the cost of that is because if we're now indemnifying and warranting the behavior of Safe or any other party in this agreement, the city is biting off a.
Which number are you on?
A level of number seven.
Thank you.
Um, under number sixteen, there's a typo, it talks about one hundred comma zero zero, that means to be, there's a zero missing. And those are the only comments that I had, I'm worried about the liability that the city is assuming by this. Also, the fact that we're entering to an agreement in twenty twenty-three, which is retroactive to October twenty twenty-one and ends on September thirtieth, twenty twenty-three, as, as the implementation period. I'm worried that we're creating retroactive liability for something that, that happened prior to the date the agreement was entered into. Um, and we don't know what was happening, we don't have any performance standards for the period of time for which we entered into the agreement. So I would request that the city attorney take a look at that again. Okay?
So do we wanna keep this on the agenda or ax it and have Winn look at it and come back next meeting?
Has he never looked, has he not already looked at all this?
Yes, sir, he's looked at it twice. We sat down, me, Laura, Margaret went over the contract again. Um, Winn has looked at this about four times now.
But did y'all, um, did y'all raise any concerns about the things we just said or is it, Laura, you look like you're surprised?
We should also talk to Emmett.
We have talked with Emmett. Talked with.
So Emmett says okay?
Yes, Emmett is on board with this contract, um.
Okay, then we'll.
The only concern that Emmett had was the fact that they have C D L licenses, which Safe requires we not put those bands. So with the C D L license, we then requiring M B R, which Ms. Jane from H R has done on every driver for Safe. And we also required C D L. Um, I'm sorry, D O T and physical.
D O T, physical.
Yes, sir, which they've all been accomplished, but one.
It's waiting on another test.
Well, if Emmett says okay, then we just need to correct number sixteen.
Yes, sir, and I can do that.
Okay. Um, so we need to ha- amend that item saying, well, you know, with correction to number sixteen, or?
Yes, sir.
Okay. All right, um, I don't see the lighting, um, for street shop and animal shelter. Can somebody talk about that?
Yes, sir, um, that's me as well. The climate crafters, it's this quote right here, it says climate crafters. Um, two departments requested lighting and that total was fifty-three hundred dollars. Um, the rest of the funding is available, um, through the city hall repair and maintenance. Correct? Building repair and maintenance, sorry.
All that fifty-three hundred is?
That was already forecasted for. It's already, that's very much portion of it. The advantage is okay from the city hall building maintenance.
It's from. Okay.
And there is funding available.
Okay.
Um, and this is for safety, security reasons out there.
All right.
And Nate did visit the animal shelter the other day.
And, yeah. Um, I think you've got s- an email in your packet that, um, Ms. Stephanie has emailed us, she just has some concerns and seen if we can do some things out there to help her. Reed's wanting to take care of a couple of things like to improve the landscape and to, there's a hose that needs to be, uh, reconstructed up front because they're, uh, they've got holes in the back right now, they're having to walk, take that hose and drag it all the way around. So we're gonna do, do a faucet there, um, repair the interior spaces. That's something that, uh, needs to be done because as y'all know, we're out of room, we've got dogs and top of dogs. So I asked Alex to, uh, put this in your packets, maybe you guys can look over and at our next meeting, we can talk and maybe come up with some different ideas on how we can pay for this or how we can help. And she's un- she understands that she gets a budget and she will have to pay for some things out of her budget along with her payroll. Speaking of payroll, she's also asking that we look at their, um, her employees' increase because, you know, I, I went out there and that, that is a hot, nasty and rough job. Uh, they're getting, I think, right at eleven dollars an hour, which, and I, and I know we, we talked about not doing everybody as we go, but I know we got the fire department coming up and I know Reed's talking about giving his guys a bump.
And the court.
And the court's talking about, so I was hoping maybe we could, uh, put this and put them in there also. I, I don't know what we want to, uh, raise that to, maybe let H R look at, I know what Auburn has recommended, but I know we've got, got some things on the Auburn brand that, uh, we don't necessarily like. So I was hoping maybe we could look at, uh, some of these items at the next. So I was hoping maybe we could look at, uh, some of these items at the next council meeting. I just wanted you guys to, uh, see the email and just look over it, maybe you guys could give me some different ideas. I, I will say that the two sheds that she's asked for, one is to store, uh, dog food out in the back. Because right now they're having to walk a long ways to get food and take back to the kennels. They're having to ask to walk across the building, get the food and then take, maybe we put one shed back there. And it's, I'm not talking about a big shed, but to store dog food back there. And then the another shed for them to take their lunch and break in, because they're taking a lunch and break right by the building. You can still smell the, uh, smell from the shelter and there's no peace and quiet there. I, I, I wouldn't want to eat lunch in that spot. You know, sometimes if you've got a lot going on, you have to eat lunch at work, I know I do, so.
Yeah, last time I went down there, they were eating lunch out front and I was like, you know, it was quite a good place.
Did you tell her to get some prices?
Well, I hadn't yet, I wanted you guys to see it first, I wanted y'all to lay eyes on it. I know Reed's gonna take care of a couple of things and maybe he can help us on some other, but I know there's some things that, uh, the interior spaces, that, that's gonna cost us probably, I don't know, amount of us just buying some, uh, fencing and whatnot.
She wants to redo, she wants more kennels too, but she also wants to redo the layout.
That's right. That's right, it's, I don't think it's real high, it's just, I, like I said, I just wanted you guys to look at it, maybe think about it over our period and see what we can come up with.
Okay.
Could we make it kind of easier to receive and decide?
If y'all want me to uncover to get some quotes on.
Yeah, with some numbers decided.
Okay.
Those, 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 that storage building needs to be conditioned so that the food doesn't, you know, far enough in the.
Needs to be sealed, sealed, sealed. You got window unit or something?
And the salaries, it's an insignificant amount of money that this needs to do.
Cause there's only a couple of people.
Yes, sir.
It's just, it's, it's life too short.
Um, okay, two other things, the Santa Magic thing where they were going over and he had a contract, uh, with the city and he was going to work the holiday season, decorate, we're responsible for that. Our only monetaryal responsibility would be up to five thousand dollars to split, um, whether there's contractors doing work for the season or new decorations, buy, buy new decorations, things of that matter. So, you know, for, he's charging several thousand for other municipalities to even sign the contract and then split the decorations and stuff. But I don't know, I see Laura, I don't know if he's talked with you about this, Santa Magic has talked with you about this?
I'm just aware of it, but we're not part of that.
Right, I didn't know if he was gonna, I don't know the extent of his involvement besides the decorations downtown. And with it being free, I know, uh, it's free implementation charge, then I don't know, I don't think he's gonna be involved in messing with y'all's stuff that y'all always do.
I don't think so.
So I think his is totally separate. So I need to know, like, would, do we want to put this on?
So is it two five hundred or five thousand, you said?
No, no, I'm, it's five thou- up to five thousand that we would be splitting costly.
How many, how, I forgot?
It's a year, co- it's a year.
So five thousand dollars every year?
And to decorate.
But like he buys decorations this year, he may not buy them next year, you know? I just don't want to get in a position of where we come back up in September, October and like crap, we need all this, let's get it done and that he's not gonna have time to react.
The pending agreement goes to January twenty-four.
Okay.
If you agree to it, it would go from now, whenever you guys agree, to January twenty-four to get us for holidays.
No, but what I'm saying is, so up to five thousand dollars, the city is responsible for half of that or the city is responsible for?
That's our, for different occurrences, if we hit five thousand, we don't split no more.
I gotta, um, I got another question, cause I don't, I remember it, but I don't remember it, is there a list of what this would include?
He, he gave it to us, but on paper, of course, I don't have the paper anymore and he's, he's busy with some, um, other matters right now, but, um.
I just need to see what's on the list.
Yeah, it was decorations, layout of the decorations and, um, storefront.
But it wasn't that music everywhere, well, that's not.
No, that's my, that's my next thing, is the street sounds, we need to either kick it out or say we're gonna do it because it's been lingering forever, um, there's a low implementation cost. Utility Board signed off on what he claimed the utilities were.
I visited, uh, Gaston, they had to go, and I kind of liked it.
It's awesome.
But I don't.
Fair enough.
It is, in addition to, uh, a lot, especially Main Street Alabama, downtown communities. And it's nice, you don't even know, when I heard it in Gaston, I thought, I said, where is that, where is that little jazz band coming from? Cause it was so subtle, but it just set a nice tone and it can be seasonal. I'm in favor of that if it is a minimal cost, I think it adds a lot of, um, a lot of, uh, atmosphere to our downtown market.
And you can tap in and play anything, whether there's a, we're in the high school playoffs, you know, they could play it down there and stuff like, I mean, in, anything, you know, radio can go through there.
I don't remember how much it was. Can we just get Brian to come back and talk about both?
Yeah.
And let's make a decision then?
He can do it next week, he can come back.
Let's just do that.
I remember the radio thing, I just don't remember what was included.
Cause he's presented it twice, he hasn't done anything.
I just don't remember what was included on the, um, the Santa Magic, just that, that itemized list.
He couldn't come anyways today, but I'll have him come back.
He could just send us a list.
Let's get him to resend those two papers. Okay. Steve, are you gonna update us any on parks and what's happening?
Um, well, the underground utilities was going awesome at Noble Park and then they hit our water line and now our toilets weren't flush, so. Had some big problem at Noble Park, but, um, we have started at South Island, we've taken down all the broken fence. We're waiting on one more bid to come back on the, um, pressure washing of the building. And then we'll start painting on it and, um, I already submitted for bids. Home Depot does a bid thing if you order a certain amount of stuff, different Home Depots will actually build on, build on the same product. So all the matching tables that we have throughout town at our different parks, we put out a bid to get ten of those.
What about the electrical issue at, um, South Highland, because wasn't that the biggest thing, was the electrical?
So the utilities board, I met with, um, Eric and we have determined the spot that they're gonna put their thing that's gonna allow them to run it underground into the pavilion. And I'm assuming once they finish Noble Park, they're going there next.
Okay, I got another question since we're talking about, um, over on South Highland. Um, where you guys? Cromer, I'm sorry, I got a question. Um, I was talking to this lady outside, I know at the, a couple of meetings ago, we went over there and we patched a hole. It is, but now it's back, so we filled it in, so now it's back. So, will you help her today before we leave, because what, what's the street we filled the hole?
Hammett, South Hammett.
Oh, South Hammett, so we filled it in, but now, I don't know if we didn't pack it up, I don't know what happened, but the same hole is back after we filled it in.
And I've got a list coming to you guys too also.
I do too. But, but I have to say for fair, some people have been asking me, because since the sales tax has been, um, passed, people want to know about the, um, next paving, um, plan, what, where's that list? They want to see a list, because there should be a list left on from the last time.
Reed's got one from twenty twenty-one and then Laura's got two or three streets she added on top of that.
But.
I've got it in email.
I don't know, but, but people, but yeah, people want to see that prioritized, we can give people the list and then we don't want to say, well, we didn't get but three hundred dollars.
If you got an email, you can shoot it to her.
And it's not gonna be the same price, of course, this is one of them, but you'll add the streets out a little bit.
I think it would be nice to put that out there so at least people will see what they're getting for the money.
Right, okay, I'll look at it, look forward to it.
I've got one more thing, Steve, Steve, have you heard anything from Chainless King?
No, I haven't.
You got Michael right here. Look.
You got Michael right here if you want to talk about him.
I was in here too, okay.
Well, look, I want, hang on a minute, I want, Chainless King, what?
I reached out to them three weeks ago on a Monday and I was gonna have it within the week.
Have we fully paid them?
No, I haven't heard a word.
Guys, here's the thing, I make a motion, we have a special meeting.
And request them.
And request them, or we get the money we've got set aside for Food World and the pool and fix it till we can get that other bill.
I agree. But what I'm saying.
Cause it's holding water, guys.
But if we paid for it, they still need to produce what we paid for.
I agree.
We can't just let people off, I mean, I don't know what's going on, but I'm saying, you don't pay somebody and let them off the hook.
Right, I'm, I made that motion that we have a special call meeting.
I agree.
Either fix the pool, get them in here. I, I disagree with that, it's hold, it's been holding water for four, six months, I disagree with that. I don't believe that, I don't believe that.
Where's the geological report that states that it is?
Hey, well, I'll tell you one, I don't want to get into it, I don't care what y'all do, if that's what y'all gonna do, I'm, I'm, I'm gonna go down, y'all can have a separate meeting about that.
No, 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 I'm, I'm just saying, I, I would like to call a special one to get all this fixed.
To Chainless King here.
Yeah, that'd be fine, or fix, or fix the pool, one or two guys.
Go into a special meeting about fixing that pool, y'all can do whatever y'all want.
We can reach out, we can set a meeting and reach out to Chainless and say, hey, we, we're having a meeting just for you, you need to come in and update us and we need to get that.
Not, not update us, we want for the promise, not update us, like, this is.
I mean, we, me and you went to those things religiously.
Ask for the deliverables, I mean.
The taxpayers' money paid for that.
I'll get out to them and reach, reach out to them.
At least got connections, if he can just reach it. They won't answer.
No, he's reached out to her, but I'm saying, don't ask for an update, ask for the finished product.
All right, that's it for the work session.
I'm just, I'm just a quick reminder, I apologize, um, uh, I'll be emailing to you, but just an update, um, we are having our fireworks celebration on just Friday, June the thirtieth, um, at Central Park. Our fire department is managing the, um, ign- igniting of the fireworks again from the Food World parking lot. And so we're so appreciative of their partnership, but we'll have a whole day, we've got food trucks coming in, we have live music. Um, we have, uh, fire department's also doing their mega sprinkler like we had at Crazy Days and the Toucha Truck. Um, we have fun frenzy again, so lots of activities and, um, just hope that you all, if your schedule allows, will join us for that afternoon and evening.
Is it on Saturday before the fourth?
It's Friday before the fourth.
Friday before the fourth.
June the thirtieth.
And y'all did a phenomenal job with Crazy Days, my children enjoyed it, I enjoyed it, it was a great day.
It was fun, we had, we had, the merchants were so appreciative of the event for their sales.
Is Michael right there? Yeah, I'm sorry, I forgot about Michael.
Four, four to eight thirty.
May, May seventeenth's last time I talked to him.
May seventeenth, and they had.
I think it was a Wednesday I was supposed to have at my friend.
And our children are surfering.
Yes, they are.
Go ahead, Mike, come on in again, you told us you'd be back, so.
I'm back, um, well, good evening, I, I know the, if you have any questions on the change order that's on the agenda for East Clay and South Church, South Church Street, South Church, I'll be happy to answer that, um, but I think we talked about that one last time. Um, there will be another change order for a credit coming back, they're using some of the material from the Avondale Mills project. Um, I don't know exactly how much that is, so there'll be some of that that, that comes back to the city. Um, the, the other thing that I wanted to make quick mention, I know council meeting's gotta start. The Wal- the Walnut Road Bridge project, the, the city got, uh, two hundred and fifty thousand dollars of R A A grant funding for. It's, uh, it's gotta be let, I think, by September seventh. Um, so we have the plans ready, uh, I've just given the plans and a cost estimate budget to Reed and the mayor. Um, there's really no action required by you guys right now, but I just wanted to keep y'all involved, let you know that we're gonna be working through Alda, getting their blessing to let it, and then, you know, I'll come back to y'all one more council meeting, say, hey, y'all ready for us to let it? Here's the estimated budget, here's what we applied for, what we think it's gonna cost and all of that.
But we've got that two fifty as long as it's let by September.
Correct, yes, yes.
Sounds good.
And, uh, so, and I talked to Mitch, there's some sewer replacement work that the utility board's gotta do and he is committed to, I sent him the cost estimate with the utility items in there that, that's gonna cost the utility board, and he was good with that cost on his end. So just quick rundown, two hundred and fifty thousand dollars of R A A funding are dedicated to this project. Um, the total cost estimate of just construction right now is three hundred and fifty thousand. Okay, and thirty thousand of that is utilities. So, you know, just kind of, kind of working that back, right now it stands as two hundred and fifty thousand dollars of Alda R A A, seventy thousand dollars of city, and then thirty thousand dollars of utility board. Is where that's at. Now, if, if Reed does the C and I or the, the construction inspection, that's all it will be, or, you know, the city does that themselves, if you contract that out, there'll be additional percentage for that. So just budget numbers to think about.
Okay, thank you.
Yeah.
Anybody else got anything for Michael?
Steve, I got a question, do you have the geological survey for the pool?
I don't, I was an athletic.
Yeah, go ahead.
And on drainage, the drainage improvements, they're finishing up Calhoun and First. Uh, they're planning to be out of there by Fri- hopefully opening up by Friday and they're gonna move to Walnut and Norton Monday, next Monday.
Okay.
So just update you there.
Good deal, thank you, Michael, thanks.